I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Our next item of business is to approve our agenda, which was published and posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Chad. We have a motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We move then to recognition and Molly Hanks, our East Athletic Director, I understand is going to walk us through the first part. As we recognize state recognition for East Dance Team. Molly?
Good evening. I'm really excited to be here. This team has accomplished an incredible amount this season and we really enjoy celebrating it as much as we can. So I'm going to call up my two coaches. They are in their first year as coaches. Kelly Stylin and Michelle Zancanero and I'll have the girls come up as well.
My name is Kelly Stylin and this is my coaching counterpart, Michelle Zancanero. And we are the coaches of the East Varsity Dance Team. Thank you for inviting us to tonight's meeting and recognizing all of our hard work our dancers have done this season. Our amazing team members are Captain Reagan Cunningham Jr., Captain Gia Borgos Jr., Aubrey Turcot Jr., Michaela Schrader Jr., Marley Andre Jr., Maya Walksmeath sophomore, and Sophia Justman freshman. Throughout the season, these ladies have shown hard work, dedication, perseverance, passion, teamwork, and their love for dance in every practice and performance they did. Alongside performing at football and basketball games, the team competes in dance competitions all around the state. Our team competes in kick, jazz, and pom and this season has placed at every competition we attended. We concluded our season with qualifying for state in both kick and jazz and being regional champions in D2 Kick. Our three soloists, Aubrey, Michaela, and Gia also qualified for state with their solos for a chance to make the All-State Team. At state, the team placed third in kick and topped 10 in jazz. Aubrey Turcot made the All-State Team with her solo, meaning that she was one of the top 18 soloists in the state. We could not be prouder of these ladies and how hard they've worked this season. Thank you again for inviting us tonight and recognizing all the success of our team.
Great, thank you. And also we have state recognition for the West Dance Team and Erin Felber, the West Athletic Director, will walk us through that. Erin?
Hello, thank you for having us. I'm excited to call up head coach Julia Palmer to talk about our West Dance Team.
Hi everyone and thank you so much for recognizing our team tonight. My name is Julia Palmer and I'm here with my assistant coach Haley Kraft and our wonderful dance team who I will introduce to you right now. We've got from your left to right Caitlin McFarland, Senior and Captain, Audrey Brown, Evelyn Schaller, Addison Dent, Junior and Captain, oh I'm so sorry, Audrey is a sophomore and Evelyn is also a sophomore, Senior and Captain Iris Spores, Senior and Captain Elena Lor Kugel, Freshman Casey Dow, Junior Riley Bushky, and Olivia O'Connor, Senior and a Captain as well. I'm so sorry. You think you know everybody's names until you start looking at their actual faces. We have had such a fun season this year from camp, starting all the way back in early summer to football games, to prepping for competitions. We decided this year to take two routines to all of our competitions and it was a huge success. For the first time ever, our team was able to take two routines to state, our hip-hop routine and our pom routine. Our girls have worked so hard throughout this whole season and they are truly deserving of this recognition tonight. So thank you all so much.
We have the requisite pictures, Superintendent.
I got it.
Fantastic, all right, well, well, thank you. What energy is in the room tonight? Wow, it's amazing. If there was more room, we might ask, ask for demonstration. But thank you so much for coming, especially on a night before classes. Really appreciate it. We love hearing about the accomplishments of our district. I'm going to guess there are some parents in the crowd, parents of dance, yeah, wait, thank you also. Thank you also because we know it's a lot of, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work. In talking with some of my coworkers who have students in dance, understand it's a long season. Someone can say, how long is it? Someone can call it out. When does it start and when does it end? Or is it like kind of year-round?
Year-round.
Almost year-round. Yeah, tryouts in May, it's amazing. Well, well, thank you again. And those of, those of you who have heard other presentations and other recognitions, you hear me say, I appreciate the fact that you students, you put in so much hard work and so much commitment, so much teamwork. Those are positive traits that are going to serve you well in life, no matter what direction you go in. So thank you for, thank you for that and setting a positive example for other students and for other adults and for coming to the meeting tonight. We really, really appreciate it. So this is the point of the meeting where I remind the group that this is a public meeting and we would invite you to stay for the whole meeting. But we are also not offended, especially on a night before classes, that if you have other things that you need to do and you wish to exit, you can do so, you can do so at any time. So thank you again for coming, we really appreciate it. We're just going to pause, assuming some of you may wish to, may wish to leave. All right. So with that, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is public participation. I do not have any comment cards that were turned in. I'm just going to scan the room to see if there are any. Seeing none, we will move on then to our consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we have minutes of the February 5, 2024 regular board meeting and executive session, one contract, two resignations, no retirements, and also the acceptance of a career and technical education donation from JW Speaker and revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through January 31 of 2024. I believe that consists of the entire consent agenda. I would move to approve this consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Kelly, motion and second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We now move to reports and we start with school report, high schools and Badger. And I believe our principals are going to start, all right, please come forward. I see Jennifer Potter and Patrick O'Connor, correct?
Yes.
All right, welcome.
Thanks for introducing us. All right, Board, thank you so much for having our teams at both Badger and West Bend East and West High Schools here tonight. In the past, we have taken time to present our goals to you separately from one another. Tonight, we want to present you with a change to this structure. Our schools are working hard to align our work across systems, including our actions and resources to support our students, staff, families, and community. We have been working to intentionally align our practices because we are keenly aware that current seventh graders are simply future ninth graders who are all of our future graduates. We believe that the more connected we are, the better an experience our students will have in their educational journey. Tonight, we will present to you a video that showcases our efforts, our goals, and our next steps. Before we begin, I want to thank high school teacher Mr. Benthal and his wonderful teams of students, Grayson DeGroot and Jose Rodriguez, who were not able to come tonight. One is returning from vacation and the other one was going to try, but he had to work, who put together this video for us tonight that highlights the great things happening in our schools. We also want to thank Badger Middle School teacher Mr. Shuleski and the Badger Media Club for helping share footage of Badger with Grayson and Jose. All of these students worked hard to demonstrate what they see and believe connects the important work we do at both of our sites. We also want to take a moment to have our administrative teams introduce themselves in their roles before we show you the work that we have been involved in this year. So I'll let Badger introduce first.
Good evening, I'm Tyler Wood, Assistant Principal at Badger.
Hello, Bob Feldkamp, Dean of Students at Badger.
Now I'd like to introduce the administrative team at the high school.
Hi, I'm Dave Ullman and I'm the Associate Principal of the High Schools.
I'm Jared Keeseau, Assistant Principal, oversee East and West freshmen.
Dave Riley, West Assistant Principal, 10 through 12th grade.
Susan Serag, Assistant Principal of East and West, 9 through 12.
Laura Crowe Hamrick, East Assistant Principal, 10 through 12.
Hello again, Molly Hanks, East Athletic Director.
Erin Felber, West Athletic Director.
Thank you. When we are done presenting our video, Emily Melstrand, Director of Student Services, will take some time to discuss our district and school-specific student engagement and behavior data. At the end of our whole presentation, after Ms. Melstrand presents this data, we welcome the opportunity to answer any questions you may have about our schools and the work that we do. So without further ado, let us show you this great video made by our students.
In our school district, we align our work to four main goals focused around effective and efficient operations, safe and secure environments, engagement and customer satisfaction, and student learning.
We are focused on very specific learning goals for our students. At Badger and the high school, our goals include increasing our reading and math by 3% to 5% proficiency as measured by our district and state benchmarks, the STAR test, Wisconsin Forward, pre-ACT Secure, and the ACT. Currently, both schools are on track to meeting their 3% to 5% increase in proficiency as measured by our district benchmarks.
As we continue to analyze our benchmark and classroom data, our schools have shifted to a focus on improving classroom, department, and grade level data. Staff at both sites review data in teams during their professional learning community time. Badger teachers analyze data as grade-level teams, beginning each weekly meeting with a data review to action plan. At the high school, teams meet at least three times a month in their course and content teams, called professional learning communities, to review data and action plan towards their individual class and course goals.
In our district, we are always working to increase staff engagement. The district employee engagement survey data is used to set engagement goals at our sites. Communication is a key growth point for our staff. Both Badger and the high schools communicate information through a variety of outputs, including our building leadership teams, weekly communications, and monthly department slash grade level meetings. Both schools also engage staff through newsletters and individual or small group feedback opportunities.
Our goals under safe and secure at both Badger and the high school are intended to help us focus on increasing student belonging. Student belonging is demonstrated when students meet school-wide expectations. At both of our schools, we are working to help students demonstrate this by maintaining a high number of students in the zero-to-one major referral category. Currently, both Badger and the high school have right above 93% of students meeting this goal. Some of the work we are doing to maintain and grow our students in this category are clearly defining administrative action, clearly defining consequences for student behaviors, reviewing behavior data on a consistent basis, responding with targeted and intensive interventions, focusing on clear expectations and rules, welcoming and engaging environments, and optimistic closures in the classrooms. We are also aligning our systems of support for grade 7 through 12 through intentional professional learning provided by our district behavior coach.
Student engagement positively affects school behavior and creates a sense of belonging. Because of this, we continue to strive for increased opportunities for students and increased participation and hard work to ensure these opportunities are positive ones. We currently have 32 varsity sports opportunities for our students. In addition, the high school also offers 44 clubs and co-curriculars. Last year, almost 77% of students at West Bend East and West High Schools participated in a sport. We are always looking to increase participation each year. At Badger, we offer 10 sports and over 40 clubs for our students to explore their interests. As you can see, our goal is that there is something for everyone at our schools. Overall, our data shows that the more engaged students are in their school community, the more positively this affects school behavior and creates a sense of belonging. We will continue to strive for increased opportunities for students and increased participation and work hard to ensure that these opportunities are positive ones.
Thank you for your time invested in hearing about all the wonderful things going on both at Badger Middle School and the West Bend East and West High Schools.
All right, thank you again for taking the time to watch our presentation made by our students. As veteran administrators in newer roles, we are committed to working together to build strong alignment between our schools. At this time, one of our primary focal points is the 7th through 9th grade transition. Now, we'd like to invite Director of Student Services, Emily Melstrand, up to talk in a little more depth about what some of this works looks like. She's going to highlight the student engagement and behavior data for the whole district, but she is going to zoom in on the Badger to high school transition that I referenced. We're looking forward to answering any questions you have after her presentation as she addresses related pertinent topics. While we transition, Ms. Melstrand, on behalf of our administrators, just want to say thanks again to all our students who helped to create this.
Awesome, thank you. All right, I'm going to get a little bit organized here. All right, well, thank you very much for having me come to present this evening. I first want to just acknowledge that our structure tonight was really intentional. I had actually intended to come at our last board meeting and present. And as we were planning collectively for this conversation, it became really apparent that one of the things that we're super proud of in the current year is the way that we are working collectively across Badger and the high school and our student services team. And I don't want to suggest that that's new because we've always done that, but we've made a really intentional decision to be very collaborative in the way that we are planning, particularly around student engagement and behavior. I also wanted to acknowledge that, you know, part of this presentation tonight is to honor the commitment that we've made to the board and this community to come forth and have open dialogue and share with the community what's happening in terms of our student engagement. And from my perspective tonight, I'm going to focus primarily on behavior. We have acknowledged within the context of that video, the importance of being engaged and how strong engagement promotes strong academic learning. And it, it really encourages kids to meet the behavioral expectations in a more consistent manner. So I want to thank the Badger and the high school team for the work that you did prior to this presentation. And then I also want to take a minute to acknowledge that my student services team is here this evening. They're a huge piece to this, this puzzle of work that we're doing collectively. I have Jill Corbett and I apologize, I'm going to turn seldom, I have a tiny bit of vertigo. So I'm going to try not to turn quickly. So if you, if you could just step up when I say your name, I'd greatly appreciate it. Jill Corbett is here tonight. She is my program administrator. Jill is the individual in our district who manages all of our alternative learning options and she is a master at developing individualized plans for students collectively with the Badger and high school teams. And then Carrie Hughes and Kelly Bremseth are also here tonight. These are my student services coordinators. They support special education across the levels, but they are deeply involved with teams when teams are working on behalf of individual students who need something very unique or specialized in terms, in order to be successful. And then Amy Carver is also here and she is our behavioral coach. She has been an integral part of the work across the district and this year has been very focused on that Badger to high school transition and ensuring alignment in our professional development across those two levels. Thank you. Okay. So as we move into this discussion, I want to be able to provide you a little bit of background or context to place the, the data that I'm going to bring forward to you. And, and I want to start by making sure that both the board and the community understand how we categorize or classify different types of behavioral information. So on the slide in front of you, what you see is a table that defines kind of the difference between a minor discipline referral and a major discipline referral. And that, the term discipline referral is really the term that we use to describe how we document instances in which students are not meeting the behavioral expectations in our school. And a minor behavioral referral really refers to kind of those low-level situations that are managed at the teacher level. These are the things, although they're, we, we don't want them to happen, children make mistakes, children will make impulsive decisions, and, and sometimes those result in more direct teacher intervention. So when there's a minor disciplinary referral that's managed by the teacher, they assign the discipline, they follow up with the guardian or parent if necessary, and their focus really is on teaching and improving behavior with students. And then major behaviors, those are the incidents that require administrative management or intervention. Major behaviors include the more significant behavioral incidents that will result from a more substantial disruption in the school environment. But I think it's important to acknowledge that all, not all major behaviors are a significant event or a substantial disruption. These are the instances in which a teacher or a staff member has determined that an administrator support is needed or necessary. And sometimes that can actually be the accumulation of a couple of minor disciplinary incidents. So for example, a student who has been reminded by their teacher two times to put their cellphone away may on the third time receive a major disciplinary referral. So sometimes the cumulative effect and also sometimes a situation where a teacher is intervening and not necessarily getting the response that they're looking for in terms of changed behavior or growth in that behavior. So I wanted to make sure that I, I clearly define that because I think it's easy to look at the term major discipline and assume that that always constitutes a major disruption. And that is not the case. In fact, most major disciplinary referrals do not fall into that top tier of significant disruption. So with that, I wanted to give you just some additional context. Major referrals can include all of these things. And you can see that it ranges from more seemingly low-level behavior, unacceptable, but still lower level, cheating on a paper or tests, not putting your phone away, to swearing at somebody, getting into a fight, being disrespectful, bullying. All of those things in different contexts might fall within the major behavioral referral category. This visual is designed to provide you with some information about how a major behavioral incident is processed and responded to within the district. So an incident can occur and there's two possible paths forward. A teacher might put that referral into our Skyward system or their internal communication system, depending upon the level. And it's after the fact. So a student was disrespectful in the classroom. Either it was an, a situation that has occurred multiple times or it rose to a greater level and the teacher will go in and place that disciplinary referral. Our administrative team will receive that, they'll respond to it, they'll investigate it, and they'll determine what behavioral code is assigned to that incident. And then, I'm going to talk about this in just a minute, but they'll use our disciplinary rubric to determine the path forward. An alternate option would be that there is an incident that occurs that requires immediate administrative intervention. So, you know, an incident where a student needed support de-escalating or a teacher simply needed support to manage the student situation, they would call the administrator, the administrator would come in to the incident and then they would move forward with helping to support that disciplinary referral in our system, conduct the investigation, assign the behavioral code, and then align that incident with our rubric to determine the disciplinary response. So this is going to look familiar to you, the next slide. You saw this visual in the video that was presented by the Badger and the high school team. Over the course of the past two years, our administrative team has been doing a lot of work around realigning our practices related to behavior, clearly identifying expectations, but also looking at the way that we're collecting that information and kind of sorting that information across codes. And you'll probably remember from past conversations, I've brought forward some work where initially we were really looking at, we need to make sure that more instances than not, we are comparing apples to apples. So we worked on aligning what are our disciplinary codes and what are the definitions within, within each of those codes. And then, after implementing that over the course of the first year, we came back together as an administrative team and felt really good about where we were headed in terms of cleaning up our, or, or improving our data, I should say, improving the clarity in which we were communicating about behavioral instances. We came back together as a team and we recognized that a second area where we really wanted to focus our, our calibration related to our disciplinary responses to behavior. And we wanted to make sure that we had consistent ways of saying, when this happens, these are the expected consequences for that incident. That work was done in conjunction with different layers and groups of individuals. Our WBSD Way team participated, our Student Services Leadership Coalition participated, all of our administrators. We actually took some feedback, we had some really good, we had some really good artifacts given to us by community members and even some of our board members who offered like, hey, have you considered this? And we came together as a team and we worked through every single one of our behavioral codes and we created a disciplinary rubric. And this rubric, I'm calling it a disciplinary rubric, that's the primary purpose, but in addition to helping us determine the disciplinary response, it reminds- addition to helping us determine the disciplinary response, it reminds people of the importance of supporting and intervening when kids are struggling. The consequence has to be clear and it's necessary, but we also have to recognize that kids are struggling for a reason, and we have to wrap around that in order to move them forward. So what you see in front of you, I know it was something that was brought forward to you at the end of summer, and I know this isn't new information to you, but I thought it was important for the context of this conversation. We're really proud of the work that our administrators have done using this tool. And I'm going to kind of explain the way that this works. So when we first started with the implementation of the concept of progressive discipline, we were really focusing on offenses, first offense, second offense, third offense. That becomes really problematic when the first offense is a really big deal, right? If the first offense is significant, the disciplinary response needs to align to that. So as we started working through these different options, our administrators actually came back with, instead of that, we should be looking at the impact of behavior. And we developed this tool that has four domains. We're looking at the intent of the action, we're looking at the impact on the school community or another individual, we're looking at the level of disruption, and whether or not the student has a history of similar behavior. And with those different domains, we're able to take a behavioral incident, break it up across the domains, and determine the level of significance so that it correlates consistently with a disciplinary response. And I'm going to tell you, I am like tremendously proud of the work that our administrators are doing with this. I can walk into any one of their offices, this tool is printed, it's on their desk. I think Bob Deldkamp has more coffee on his than he does ink at this point, and I don't think he drinks coffee. It's used, and I feel consistently proud of the work that they've done in terms of creating a more calibrated and consistent response to student behavior. So now that you kind of have that background and context, I want to jump into some of the data. And the information that I'm going to present, I'm going to start kind of like large scale, and then I'm going to actually really narrow in. And I'm going to narrow in in a way that I haven't in the past because I really want to unpack one specific category of behavioral difficulties. But I want to start here, and you've heard some of this already. One of our district priorities focuses on the fact that we want the majority of our students to meet school-wide expectations all of the time. But we understand that they're children, they're students, they're growing, and sometimes they might misstep. So our goal, our district priority is that all students, I'm sorry, 85% of our students have zero-to-one major disciplinary referral. And that kind of aligns, you've seen multiple times over the years, that idea of a pyramid and how most kids, 85%, are going to respond to the things that we do every day to support kids. And then there's going to be kids who maybe don't fall into that zero-to-one, they might fall into two-to-five disciplinary referrals. They need more targeted intervention. And then there's going to be a small percentage of kids who need a lot of intensive intervention. And those are kids that you're going to see in our data fall into that six or more disciplinary referrals. And then, in addition to looking at kind of that district priority, we have a short-term goal, and this is where this strong collaboration is really growing from. We recognize in our district that our seventh, eighth, and ninth graders tend to be struggling the most in terms of meeting school-wide expectations. And so we're focusing on kind of moving the needle across those three buckets. We want to increase the number of students who have zero-to-one, and this includes major and minor referrals. And then, we want to increase, we want to keep kids under five. And that's kind of a confusing concept, but what we're really trying to do is target kids before they fall into that six or more referral bucket. We want to recognize the pattern, intervene, and prevent kids from moving to that top tier. All right. Oops. Okay. So this slide is designed to show you major behavior referrals over time. It's taking a snapshot at the end of first semester. I have four years of data, including this year, and I actually left out the year, the 2021 year. It was kind of an outlier because we had so many kids in virtual at that time. But you can see that generally, we're trending in a pretty typical direction in terms of at this time of the year, we have 90% or more of our students meeting that district priority, and that's consistent across the years. You will notice, when you look back to 1920, we had more kids falling into that three-to-five range, and that's really where we're targeting, we're trying to intervene sooner. This slide is kind of representing the same data, but it's looking across our district levels. I did not break elementary out by school because really the total data represents all of the elementary schools. But what you'll see is across all of our sites, and then I pulled out seventh, eighth, and ninth grade very specifically, you're going to see that we are on track for meeting our goal of 85% or more with zero-to-one office referrals. And as I kind of previewed, you know, the area where we have our most focus is that seventh and eighth grade, and ninth, I'm sorry. So then what we did is we kind of narrowed into this short-term goal, as I mentioned earlier, and this is focusing on the seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. We're looking to increase the number of students with zero-to-five major or minor referrals from 84.3 to just over 89%. And what you see here is, our goal is to keep the blue bar above the yellow line. So right now, we are on track for meeting that goal, and we are intervening really aggressively around those kids that are starting to show that trend to prevent them from moving over that threshold. And then similarly, looking at wanting to increase the number of kids in zero-to-one, again by about 5%, we are on track currently to meet that. And again, we don't want the blue bar to fall below the red line. So what I wanted to do now is I wanted to just provide an overview of what are the most frequently occurring major disciplinary referrals across the district. This is K-12, and it just kind of gives you some perspective on the types of behaviors that we are most frequently seeing that result in a major behavioral referral. And you can see the top two are insubordination, not following directions, and then personal tech violations continue to kind of top our list. And then you can kind of just eyeball down the list, to physical contact, inappropriate language, threats, and then tobacco and drug use. So now what I wanted to do is, again, I'm kind of funneling inward. I talked a little bit earlier about this idea of the kids who are falling into that six-plus bucket of major referrals. And I wanted to dig into this a little bit deeper because I've had some questions from community members and even from our board around, well, tell me about that group. Tell me about the group of kids who are struggling more consistently. And I wanted to give you kind of a district perspective on this, and then we're going to look specifically at Badger and the high school. These are the students who have six or more major referrals. You can see that that is 71 students of the 5,228 that were enrolled at this time. But I think what's really significant and kind of reinforces why we need to target kids in that two-to-five range is that that group of 71 students makes up almost 50% of all the disciplinary referrals in the district. So when you think about the impact on the school community, we're trying to target and support them because when that group of children is more successful, our entire climate is more successful in our building. And then I broke that down across the grade levels. And then I also wanted to recognize that of those 71 students, 49% of those students have a disability. They either qualify for an IEP or a 504. And I just think that that's really important to acknowledge because it tells us, we know those to be students who need something unique and different and very individualized. So now, same story, but I'm breaking this down by Badger and the high school. These are the students at Badger and the high school with six or more disciplinary referrals. There are 59 students, it's about 2.1% of all the students. And again, it accounts for almost half of the major referrals in those buildings. What I want to mention here, and I, again, we have been intervening, I mean, this is not new, to respond to data, to build individual plans of support for students, but I'm going to tell you, a year ago, our data looked different, and this is because we have two administrative teams who are working collectively, who are digging in deep with their student services team, their counselors, their school psychologists, their family liaisons. 87, 86% of that group of kids have a super-targeted behavior plan. And, you know, it's great to have a plan, right? Doesn't mean the plan's always going to work right away, but that plan is really twofold. It's focusing on the supports and services, and you can see some of those that are listed in the right-hand column. But it's also focused on having a very clear contractual piece around expected behavior and progressive discipline. We're going to support you, we're going to support you like crazy because we're not giving up on kids, and yet you need to know what the expectation is, and if we can't get you there, we have to make different hard decisions on your behalf. 32% of these students have a full-day or partial-day alternative learning option. So in those situations, we have made decisions with parents and students that we need to build something different so that you are having a more successful school experience. Okay. So I'm going to dig a little bit deeper, so I'm going to kind of funnel in now, and I'm going to really examine one category of behavior. And I don't typically do this, typically we kind of do this overview of all the different categories, but I think I'd be really remiss not to acknowledge the importance of this conversation in our community right now. So this next layer of information is going to focus on the major disciplinary data related to physical contacts. I chose this because, and I shouldn't say I, we chose this because we have to recognize that we have had a couple of pretty serious incidents over the course of the last couple of months in our community related to physical contact, fighting, or assault. And those incidents were significant. They impacted the perception of safety, and in those moments, they impacted the safety in our school community. And we have responded to those incidents, and I want to be able to provide that information to you and to our community. And I want to reiterate the fact that physical violence isn't allowed and it isn't tolerated in our schools. With that, I want to give you a little bit of context so that you understand this category of physical contact. So in our guidebook, our student support and behavioral guidebook, all of the definitions for all of the different categories exist. Physical contact is defined as the actual and/or intentional touching or striking of another individual. And what you see on this slide is kind of a range or spectrum of what's included in that particular behavioral category. And it ranges from kind of unintentional physical harm. Every single year, I have multiple instances of elementary, middle-school, teenage kids, roughhousing, and somebody gets hurt. Your intention wasn't to hurt somebody, but somebody was injured. And there's an accountability piece to that. But that is very different than something like a fight. Likewise, there's kind of this category of intentional but low-level physical contact. Those are things like, you know, I'm standing in line and I push the person in front of me, I've elbowed somebody, I've kind of shouldered somebody walking down the hall. They're intentional, but again, lower level than like a mutual fight. So then there's a category around fighting and assault, and I'm going to dig into that just a little bit deeper. But I wanted to illustrate this because I think it's important to recognize that if I pull all of my physical contact data in the entire district, if I run a report and I review that report through the lens of every physical contact is a fight, it's a very inaccurate story. So I'm going to break that down for you. First, I wanted to show physical contacts by level. What you're going to see here is that the majority of our physical contacts happen at elementary, and to be very honest, they happen at kindergarten, first, and second grade. And I'll show you what that looks like, but it's our littlest kids in the district who are learning to respond in an appropriate way when they have big emotions. It's our littlest kids in the district who are learning the rules to four-square or, you know, how to wait in line on the playground equipment. That is the majority of our physical contacts, and then you'll see that across the district. So again, I think it's important that we explain that most of our physical contacts are not fights or assaults. And I just said, most of them happen at the elementary. 97% of the physical contacts at the elementary happen within horseplay, or they are inappropriate expressions of frustration by five, six, and seven-year-olds. Similarly, at Silverbrook and the high school, 18 and 29% of those are the result of fooling around in horseplay. And then another 65 and 44% of those are those low-level intentional physical acts that are not okay, but again, a very different story than a physical fight. Okay. So this is kind of taking that same concept two slides ago where I showed the four different buckets of types of physical contact. And I wanted to break this down a little bit differently because I want to be able to align this for you to the disciplinary data. So I categorized this in three groups, bless you. The low-level physical altercations, those are the accidental, roughhousing, unsafe, or intentional but low-level physical contacts. And then I want to look at mutual fights and serious fights and assaults. A mutual fight is a fight that is unplanned. It is often the result of an emotional response. I think every year, somebody throws a chicken nugget across the table at lunch, it results in a big emotion, and there's pushing and shoving that potentially results in some type of a fight. It might result in injury, it might not, and there's some disruption to the learning community, but it's more small to moderate. And then there's a serious fight or assault. And when I think about the narrative right now and what we have experienced in the last couple of months around those particular instances, they fall here. Those are situations that were either unprovoked or premeditated. They resulted in serious bodily harm. There was a substantial impact on the learning community. And this isn't an all-inclusive, right? There's different situations. If it's unprovoked and premeditated, it might not result in serious bodily harm, but it's still completely unacceptable to come into a school community with the premeditated decision to go after another student. And likewise, not all of these would have to happen in order for it to fall into this category, but an unwillingness to discontinue in response to staff direction, that elevates a situation. When teachers are asking you to stop and you don't stop, it makes it a more serious event. Or resisting arrest when we have police officers on-site. So does that kind of make sense, how we're thinking this through? Okay. So the next four slides are just some quick data. Here's what we see at the different levels. Elementary, 96% of our kids have not had a single physical contact. 4% have. 55% happened on the playground, I'm pretty sure it's four-square. And four of those incidents met the criteria for a mutual fight, a low-level mutual fight, but it met the criteria, and that's where we classified it. Silverbrook, very similar data. 97% had none, 3% had one, 40% on the playground are out at recess, and again, four incidents met the criteria for a mutual fight. There were no instances that rose to that gold tier, yellow bucket. Badger and the high school. I put these together because I want to speak about them together because some of the incidents that we're more aware of occurred across the that we're more aware of occurred across those sites. Ninety-seven percent of our kids at Badger and the High School did not have any physical contacts. Three percent have engaged in a physical contact. And we had nine incidents that met the criteria for a mutual fight. And we have six incidents that met that top tier for a serious fight or assault. So now I want to dig into that disciplinary action. What happens? What happened when these things occurred? We went back to our rubric, and with every single one of those incidents, our administrators, sometimes in conjunction with me and our student services team, depending upon the severity of it, went through the investigation. We look at this tool, and we determine based upon the intent, impact, disruption, and history, what the resulting discipline will be. And this kind of describes that. I focused on Badger East and West High School because I think that that's most relevant to the conversation. But what you can see is there's a range of disciplinary response where that lower-level physical altercation, there is absolutely a disciplinary response for that. But all of those fell within the buckets of detention, in-school suspension, or out-of-school suspension. Those were not referred to law enforcement. That's child, teenage developmental behavior, not criminal activity. Still not okay to have physical contacts, contact, but different. And then the mutual fights, we had nine incidents. You're going to see in our data that the response elevates. So now we have a small percentage of those that had an in-school suspension. Eighty-seven percent had an out-of-school. Seventy-eight percent were referred to law enforcement. And almost twenty percent of those resulted in a disciplinary hearing, pre-expulsion or expulsion level. And then what you will see under the serious fight or assault is when students engage in that type of behavior, 100% of the time, they have been suspended, referred to law enforcement, there has been a pre-expulsion or expulsion hearing, and all of the students who engage in that type of behavior have some removal from the school environment. You're going to see along the bottom, I put a little narrative related to social media. I did that because one of the patterns that we see in our most significant behavioral instances is a high correlation to misuse or negative use of social media. Sixty-six percent of those instances that fell into that top tier started on social media outside of the school day, and then it comes into the school day. And I put that there because people are constantly talking about, how can you help? How can you support? Man, anything you can do as parents and community members to be educating kids around safe use of social media and cellphones would be super beneficial. I am almost to the end. This slide is really kind of an overview. I think this is information that the board and the community is interested in knowing and understanding. And that's that idea of what does district-level disciplinary proceedings, what do those look like in our district? So what I have here is the data on up to the end of first semester. How many pre-expulsion disciplinary hearings have we had? And that is kind of the layer of disciplinary response that precedes an expulsion hearing. Sometimes those are directed to the board, oops, sorry, and you're making those decisions in an expulsion hearing. Sometimes we handle that at an administrative level. But of those twenty-eight, twenty-two students, their plans resulted in some type of removal from the school environment with a focus on kind of that individualized education planning. We've had nine expulsion hearings. We've had seven additional teams come together to say, hey, I have a student who's struggling, they're not responsive to these interventions at the school. What can we do differently? Whether it be a combination of some school here, some at the high school, or work-based learning with some support around vocational training, whatever that might look like. It's non-disciplinary, but it's proactive to say, hey, I have a kid who's struggling, and we're trying to keep that from really impacting the school environment. And again, I wanted to just show sixty-three percent of those instances that went to an expulsion hearing, there was an element of social media use that contributed to that. Okay. So now, what, and I'm going to move through this relatively quickly because you've heard some of this from the Badger and the High School video and presentation. But what are we doing? What are we doing in addition to discipline? We know that that's an important piece to it, but that in itself isn't going to change student behavior when students are struggling with unsolved problems or skill deficits. So there's a variety of things that are incorporated into our strategic plan. Communication. We continue to work around that clear messaging for families, for kids, for our community. We've got some awesome parent engagement things happening. Actually, in collaboration with Casa Guadalupe, we're doing another presentation for parents around social media use. We did one with the police department last year. They're now partnering with Casa and our EL team to do some of that work. We're going to reboot that as a, for just our general, all of our constituents, all of our stakeholders. We have a mental health series. We're focused on our newsletter messaging, and we've got a really strong partnership with the police department around those communications. Always teaching and reinforcing. You hear it again and again, clear expectations. Student engagement, welcoming environments. But we also have some targeted instruction connected to individual plans, always with parent permission and as a part of that problem-solving. We have students who are engaged in more direct teaching around conflict management, emotional regulation. And consistently, this team is thinking about their active supervision and trying to be responsive to where supervision needs to be happening. Our staff development, we've talked about this. Amy Carver has been integrally involved with Badger and the High School, really aligning professional learning, focusing on de-escalation, focusing on setting up engaging environments, building relationships with students, also really strongly focusing on proactive and collaborative problem-solving, which is where you engage kids and families in the problem-solving process when kids need behavior plans. And then lots of district-wide learning opportunities related to mental health and trauma-informed practices and restorative practices. Transition and student engagement. I know that our principals, Ms. Potter and Mr. O'Connor, are super proud of the work that they're doing focusing on that transition between Badger and the High School. Not just for all kids, but they're already talking about the kids who might be at risk to be in that two-to-five range, six-plus range, and they're thinking about, what do we need to do to ensure their success at the high school? We have been talking about how we can better support students new to our district to help them really become a part of our school community. And then we've got some great things going around ninth-grade transition. And Molly and Erin have talked about the importance of clubs and sports. And then finally, again, three buckets that you've already heard about. We are really intentional with our data, and I will tell you that this has been, again, always present in our system, but with our change in our, kind of our leadership structure, the continuity across buildings is much more overt. But we're responding to that data. We're not just developing student behavior plans and hoping. We're monitoring those. Our teams are meeting, and they're responding and making changes. Last time I was here, I talked a lot about mental health support, so I won't jump into that tonight, but I want you to know that that is an absolute focal point in this work. As is, and we have stated this again and again tonight, those clear and consistent consequences and disciplinary practices, and the importance of communicating that to kids and families, and being clear in our response to behavior. And that is the end of that presentation. And I know it is a lot, and I think that every time I prepare to come and talk to you, but I hope you know, I just, I think that this is really important, that we're having these community conversations. And I think there are elements of this that we really needed to dig into in a way that might be a little different than we have in the past in response to some of the things that we've experienced. So we are open to questions, comments. I hope you're not too comfortable back there.
First of all, thank you for your presentation. Just speaking personally, I think the data is very, very helpful. It helps understand why your team is moving in the direction they are, what you're focusing on, if that's very helpful. I have a question or two, but I'm going to hold it for a bit. I'm just going to ask, first of all, board members, any questions? Dr. Temez?
Yeah, not so much question, but I wanted to comment on some of the data. First of all, thank you so much for the data that you put together. This is a lot of what I was asking for at some other meetings and kind of the data that I felt was more useful in kind of painting a more accurate picture of what we're seeing and really drilling down to the specifics like you have. I'm a data fiend, so I appreciate it. One of the things I find interesting, you know, I like that you have the slide that talked about six-plus major referrals and that, that comes from seventy-one students out of, you know, 5,000, and that that's fifty percent of the major referrals come from those students. And of that fifty percent, I think it's important to recognize too, that you said fifty percent of those are students who have already individualized plans or five-of-fours or what have you. And as I've learned from expulsion hearings, that some things, when they meet manifestation, then basically, that's not something that is even comes in a standard pathway to us. So I think, you know, the narrative certainly is, you know, out there that there's, you know, this tremendous amount of violence happening in the schools, and there's all these discipline problems. And certainly, I understand and sympathize with, you know, with what people are hearing, but not everyone's seen all of this data. And when you really look down at this data, you can see that it is, you know, it is something that we're, I think, well-aware of as a district. And I do think that there's a good rubric in place that we need to make sure that we continue to follow or that we need to keep in place. But I think that, you know, seeing the data presented the way that it is here is excellent, not just for us here, but this is a great thing to make sure our community has access to, so that they can see that there are, you know, consequences and accountability, and that there's a plan in place, and that it is a well-thought-out plan that is something we can almost standardize in a way with the rubric and keep consistent. And then continuing to focus on the areas that we see weakness in, in those small percentage of students who have the high number of referrals, and finding interventions for them sooner so that hopefully, we're not seeing students with ten referrals, ten major referrals, but rather, we're taking action on that sooner and, you know, really trying to call that One of the, one of the slides, I'm trying to get to the right slide here, excuse me. So when we're looking at disciplinary actions for the different levels, there it is. You had talked about social media use and the importance of parents working on that. I think part of that messaging, to just continue to encourage, you know, parents to be aware of what their kids are doing social media-wise, prevents, you know, or at least can help curb some of this in a majority of these cases. So in all, I appreciate this data. I think this is extremely useful. This is data that is really something you can look at and, I think, get a more accurate picture of what's happening and meeting those goals. Especially when you see what the district behavior data breakdown was, where, you know, a quarter of it is just personal tech use. It's not, you know, these major referrals where people might think, hey, these are all kids doing incredibly terrible behavior. Some of it's just, you know, them not listening to stuff like kids do, so.
Yep. I appreciate what you said also about, you know, just kind of reiterating the social media piece, but I think I want to make sure I illustrate, I'm connecting this to these physical contacts, but I think our whole administrative team would tell you, our data shows in our most significant behaviors, there is that thread. I mean, some of the, sometimes the threatening behavior, or kids aren't recognizing when I say this and I put this out there, it just doesn't go away. And even if I delete it right away, somebody sees it, and it creates this narrative that impacts our perception of safety, and we respond. And that can be really confusing because you think, well, I did that on the weekend at home. Well, if you did that on the weekend at home, but your language poses a threat to the school community, there's a school disciplinary response. So that kind of, that social media use, that safe social media use, kind of transcends multiple areas of discipline or multiple categories.
Do you see a pattern of, for the people who have the major referrals, the six-plus referrals, or even that three-to-five category, do you happen to have an idea of how many of those students are in the district less than three years, let's say? I mean, is that something that's available? Because I think part of what you had said about making sure students feel welcome and that we have good ways to bring new students into the community, the school community, the local community, you know, I'm just curious if you have any idea what that might be?
So I don't off the top of my head, and I'm always careful about that, right? Because we want to engage kids in our school community, whether they start with us in kindergarten or they join us in seventh grade. But I certainly think we have area to grow in that initial contact with school, and how do we really get kids feeling like they're a part of our community? Because certainly, we see some difficulties when kids are transitioning in, and we talk about that. We need to do better on behalf of kids as they're joining our district. Yeah, so I don't know the data off the top of my head, but I know that, I know the question that you're asking, and I can do some follow-up for you.
Transition can play a role, obviously, in how students behave and feel when they come into school. And I know from some of the hearings we've been at and having a question similar to that asked, I know that the administration is, you know, doing a great job at trying to, you know, wrap around new kids in our community and really try to help make them feel welcome. So I know that that's something that you guys are well-aware of and addressing. I appreciate it.
It's a very large goal for us, though. I mean, we completely recognize that, and when Ms. Melstrand says, we talk about this often. You know, I was a student here, so I know what it feels like to start in kindergarten, work your way up, and you get to high school, and the new kid comes, and you're like, do you let him in the bubble or not? You know, and there's that aspect of it, but we want our kids to feel welcome, and we have so many different ideas for moving forward for our wraparound services for that to really make sure that when they come in, they have friends, they're supported by our crew, they're supported by our staff. So we're going to, we're working on that.
Kelly, I think you reached for your microphone.
Yeah, this, it's actually this slide as well, and I think this is really important to note, that I don't think social media gets any better as adults. Looking at these, you know, if you only go to social media for your facts about the school district, you would think that there has, you know, all I hear is, administration never does anything, the board never does anything. And right here, it's 100%. So the community can see that these things are being taken care of, no one is ignoring any of this. Again, looking at social media and not asking any of the people who actually have the questions and the answers, you would think it's ninety-seven percent of our students are in these buckets instead of the three percent or the one percent. And it's, I love this slide in particular because I think this is such a great breakdown of how little those incidents are and what we do about them, and it is no tolerance. And I think it's just really important to continue to call this out because unfortunately, that social media connection is still there, and I would encourage anyone in the community to ask questions and not go to Facebook for your facts on what the school district is doing. So I really, I love this whole presentation, though. Thank you for all these numbers. I think this is exactly what we needed.
Speak to some of the social media and some of those pieces. I think it's difficult when you're dealing with a situation such as we have over the past year, when we get into a space and helping our community understand, we cannot respond. We are giving you every piece of information that we can to go into depth. You know, they wanted to know some of that kind of data. Hey, what was the outcome of those expulsion hearings? We can't give that situationally. It's about individual kids, and we certainly can't speak to it. We could not schedule this when we're in the middle of hosting hearings. Because that, if we were to have stood up and done a behavior presentation right away and talked about that when we had not been through those expulsion hearings, it would have put this board's decision at risk, meaning that their local decision could have been overturned because we weren't following due process or something of that nature. And I think that's really hard, and we always try and reinforce that we do choose to communicate. We choose to communicate what we can, when we can, and give you that. And then we look for these points in the year. And then we look for these points in the year where we can kind of wrap that in and give that a little bit more. But I think that's that's really difficult. So again, I would just urge people to, like you said, connect. And I'm always very frank with people, like, I can't speak to that. And here's kind of the why. So I think that's an important thing for people to understand, too.
And, you know, just to take on to that, the other piece to that is, in all of these situations, we have to be thoughtful about the fact that that is that is still somebody's child and we we don't tolerate the behavior. We don't tolerate those, that type of physical fighting, but we want to be cognizant of what we're putting out there because we are still speaking about somebody's child.
Other questions, thoughts? Just one item that I had was I, again, really appreciated the data. Just wondering, there are so many great data elements here. Just a thought for administration, how can we kind of construct this as a dashboard to kind of show the board over time, are we making progress? And, right, this is a baseline and there's a lot of fantastic data elements here. I have to agree with Chad, I mean, I love digging into the data. And so over time, it would be great to see the progress. And I don't know that I have an answer to that, but I'm wondering if you generally thought about that and if you can.
Emily does.
Emily?
Yes, yes. So I have a dashboard. Some might say it is, needs to be narrowed down. But actually Superintendent Wimmer and I have been talking about how to make that more static and visual for people. I have, I have a really hefty dashboard that we we use internally. It would not meet the needs of, you know, our community and I, as much as Chad likes data, I think he would open it up and say, yeah, too much. So we have been talking about that and I want to think about how we rebrand that or reshape that so it's more user-friendly.
That's great, I'm glad you've.
Thank you for that.
That's quite all right. I'm glad you've thought about it because we sometimes talk about this topic in-depth, let's just say annually, and we know there's a lot of great work that's going on in the meantime. But if there's something that can be more of a living, you know, indicator of the progress that we're making here, I think that would be beneficial. Sounds like you're talking about that and so we'd be eager to see next steps on that. Thank you.
Yeah, one last thing on the the major behavior referral over time slide. That's a slide that I really enjoyed as well because it's going back to, you know, 2019, 2020. And I like that it shows, you know, relative consistency, that this is not, you know, that behavior issues are not a new issue, you know? This is, this is a consistent issue. And of course, we want to see that number as low as possible and I would love to see it under 1%, under half a percent. That would, you know, zero would be ideal. But, you know, we live in reality and that's not going to happen with 5,000 students in a district. But I do like to see the consistency around around this to show this is, this isn't a new problem. It's not that nothing's being done, it's just that there's, you know, there's always going to be some behavior issues. And so we just have to make sure we have good plans, consistent rubrics in place and and that there's, there's a, there's an action plan in place. And I think most businesses, if you, you know, not that our students are a business, obviously, but if you if you had a success rate essentially of, you know, 95% or, you know, a Yelp review of 95% for the most part, you would consider that successful for the most part. You know, you have 1% of students who have these major referral issues and, you know, it's, you know, they're important and they're big deals, but it's not the story of what's happening in our district. And I think that's one of the most positive, encouraging narratives that we should be getting out there is that this is not the majority of how things work in our district. And I think that's really important for our community to know, to be aware of and to recognize. That's my last thing, thank you.
Other thoughts, questions? Kurt, I see you reaching for your microphone.
I just have one comment. I'm glad we talked about clubs and co-curriculars from being on the board. A lot of people with disciplinary problems are not involved with clubs and co-curriculars and are not involved with CTE programs that we have here. So maybe my word to parents, to get your children involved. If you're a single parent, parent in tough situations, get your kid involved with the schools. We have a lot to offer and I'll just leave it at that.
And we will help connect your child. If you're not sure how to do it, if they need something extra to be supported or to be successful, that's been a whole nother conversation as we recognize for some of our kids who are struggling, just to put them on a, in a club or a team without supporting them to be successful, isn't necessarily the right path forward either. So yeah, reach out. We will, we will support in making the connections, finding the right clubs, the rights, the right sports, because you're 100% correct. If kids are engaged, they do better.
I want to just give a cheer or two to our administrative team because I think that's very much on their radar, too. So when they're in the disciplinary conversations with families, when something happens, I know that's becoming more and more part of the discussion about connecting students to the school, you know, that we noticed your participation. Are there any, is there anything you're interested in? And then our wonderful athletic directors will reach out, go meet them, just make a connection. So it's really intentional work that they're trying to do to make sure that kids belong.
Other questions, thoughts? Nobody reaching for any microphones. Thank you so much. Thank you for coming. Thank you to everyone for coming tonight, we appreciate it. All right. I make the same admonition that this is a public meeting and we encourage everyone to be here. At the same time, we know that it's a.
And it's a school night for them.
It's a school night for them, too, and so for you, too. All right. If it's all right with you Superintendent Wimmer, we will continue with the superintendent's report.
Sure. The first of our community conversations on facilities is taking place this week, Thursday, the 22nd, 6:00 p.m. at the East High School cafeteria. Just a reminder, these conversations are going to help us assess the needs and opportunities of our buildings, our grounds. Our community members are invited to give feedback on priorities for the future of our school buildings and grounds. So those interested, we ask that you RSVP so we can just make sure we've got the room set up. We have everything prepared to facilitate our second conversation, covering the same information, is scheduled for Tuesday, February 27th at 6:00 p.m., same location. So if you can't catch us this week, perhaps next week works. And then again, we'll have a second round of communication and engagement around potential solutions with costs to address those needs and that occurs in April. So again, that's this week and next week, the first round of community conversations. We kind of are in that first piece of planning where we received an in-depth assessment report. We looked at financial capacity in the district. We've also looked at cost estimates and just engaging with our community to seek their feedback and input. So again, you can RSVP to that. If you have any trouble with that, just give us a call here and we'll get you registered to attend. In our last board meeting and update, I gave you an update around the WIA realignment task force. They surprised us last week by informing us that in a year's time we would be moving to a completely new conference. Instead of adding a couple of school, they noted that we would be impacted in the creation of a new conference. We stand in opposition to that. We'll be filing a formal letter to the WIA Board of Control as that plan is coming out of the task force and now going to that Board of Control to determine if they're going to accept it, move it back to committee or what the future is. That hearing is in March. So again, we'll file on behalf of East, West and our district. Every district that was impacted is also filing that same appeal. There were some pulled out of other conferences. Germantown was implicated, they weren't even on the table for change. So it was just one of those where we got an email alongside the general public very early Friday morning. So again, we've stood this entire time with our entire North Shore Conference being ready, willing and able to go to the table to come up with some solutions regarding conference alignment. But we were requesting an appeal based on how that was done and the things that were considered. So I'll keep everyone updated. Our athletic directors are communicating directly with student athletes. Again, it's not a next year change, it goes into effect the year after. And it's not for football, that's a separate conference. But they'll communicate directly with our student athletes, their families, and then the high school continues to put out information as well. And I'll keep the board and community updated. Our human growth and development materials are available to view at the Public Library. I did receive an email, I just want to honor that, that they went to the library and the staff seemed a little confused as to either how to help families access that. So we'll make sure and reach out to the library. Those materials used for grades four and five, human growth and development, should be available for viewing at the West Bend Community Memorial Library during their regular hours until February 23rd. You can go to the circulation desk to request those materials. That way, families have an opportunity after business hours on weekends to look at those. Families receive an informational letter about the unit of study and they'll also have the opportunity to opt out their children or make arrangements to view those materials at school. So we'll, we'll double check with the Public Library to make sure that communication is there. Like I said, I just received a message today, so we'll check on that. It's Black History Month. The West Bend High School Students Multicultural Club is holding the 7th Annual Black History Month Celebration on Friday, February 23rd, 6:30 p.m. at the High School Auditorium. Entertainment's provided by the band No Seat Belts and there will be free refreshments. So I'd encourage you to attend. And we've been promoting Charity Week. You heard the student reps talk about that. That was held last week at our high school. Students, families and our community were invited to donate to local nonprofits. In total, over $65,000 was raised for the following charities: Make-A-Wish Foundation, The Threshold, The Volunteer Center, Habitat for Humanity of Washington and Dodge Counties, and both Old Glory and Stars and Stripes Honor Flight, as well as Kettle Moraine. So we'll get out more details, but just wanted to celebrate with our students around building awareness around our nonprofits and their stewardship in getting donations. And it will be award season shortly. We have a Champion of Change Award. I would encourage anyone to nominate a young person or a club in our schools for what's called the Rising Star Award from the Volunteer Center of Washington County. The Rising Star Award recognizes an individual or group that's 21 years or younger whose discovery of volunteerism and commitment to our community has served to inspire others. So those nominations are due February 29th and you can check those out by visiting the Volunteer Center website. Also, the deadline is approaching for the Rolf's Education Foundation Awards as well as the Support Staff Employee of the Year Awards. That deadline is March 8th. We again, hope people will take a moment to nominate deserving staff members for these prestigious awards. And we thank the Rolf's Education Foundation for its support of those certified staff awards. Again, go to our website to complete those forms. So that is all I had. I thought I had a whole nother page, but that's all I had for updates this evening.
Great. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Thank you for your update. Our next report is the Policy Committee Report, and I will give that report. So the Policy Committee met on February 13th. We completed our final review of the policies that you see on your agenda tonight for first reading and discussion this evening. And you'll recall that the policies for nepotism, and I believe it was for complaints, were brought to the full board back all the way on November 27th, 2023, during that board meeting for discussion. So starting with nepotism, so our committee discussion included included a final review of the nepotism policies. And you'll also recall that there was good discussion about the nepotism policies at our prior board meeting. And the feedback that we had was, we just want to be sure that the district is continuing to position, to be positioned to hire the best candidate, most qualified candidate, and that a pathway for promotion doesn't face some sort of unnecessary hurdle due to language in either of the policies. And so we took that to heart. We did a full check of that language and and believe it's ready for board adoption. We'll see it for our first review tonight, but we are very interested in hearing the board's feedback on that. We also took board feedback into account when reviewing the language associated with the board and public complaints. Those policies are also both ready for first reading and on tonight's agenda. And then in addition to all that, we are presenting a request for a renumbering and a removal for more consideration, too. So moving to the future, then, the board will be refining a quarterly meeting schedule. And on that quarterly meeting schedule, we hope to set up a schedule for continuous review. The next series for review would be the 400 series, which relates to policies for students, including entrance, attendance, graduation, behavior, student welfare. And so that's a little bit of a glimpse into the future. So the policies, as I mentioned before, there'll be discussion on that later in the agenda. Can I answer any questions now? Otherwise, we will be looking at some of these policies later on our agenda. All right. We move then to discussion items. And our first discussion item is book club selections. I want to acknowledge, John, you had asked for this to be on the agenda. So Superintendent Wimmer, I'm not sure if we'll turn it over to Melanie, our Curriculum Committee Chair, to kind of talk about the ongoing work there.
Yeah.
All right, thank you so much.
That's the plan. Okay, so originally, we were set to meet last week, but that had gotten rescheduled for tomorrow. But we were going to be going over the the family and staff survey results regarding the whole book club selection process. So we can kind of discuss, you know, other areas that we're at here and then take that to curriculum tomorrow. But the board, we always knew that the whole process is going to be an iterative process. You know, we're building and refining everything as we're going, kind of figuring it out along the way. And we did have some challenges, especially with like the war and history units, slavery. Obviously, those types of, the dystopian was also one that we would run into a lot of with some violence in the books because it's just the nature of books, of history and war and things like that. So we did have to kind of allow, we had to allow some of that in there just because otherwise there wouldn't be books to read in those units. So there were things that showed up on the permission slip that would say, you know, it exceeded the board's recommendation, the threshold in that area because I believe we had it at none for all levels. So you will see some showing up with that in that area. So I imagine that we'll probably be looking for some better guidelines along those areas there. And also, it was, it was quick, you know, coming into this process, the year had already started. And so the teachers and the whole curriculum committee, everybody had to kind of hurry up and figure it out as we go so the staff could start teaching. And so that, you know, presented a challenge as well, you know, going through lists of, you know, we'd get like several class lists and there would be dozens of books and we'd have, you know, sometimes a long weekend to kind of go through that. And obviously, not every book is on every website with reviews and saying how many swear words or whatever, you know? So it's kind of, we're flying by the seat of our pants a little bit here and figuring it out as we go. And, you know, I would say that as a result of the filters that we did put in place, there were more than 108 books that were eliminated just before they even came to our committee based on that. And one of the things, we really tried to make sure that there was transparency, that parents were informed on all three of the categories of the profanity, sexual content and violence, what was in every books and that there would be books that had nothing in any category as well available for families that did not want their kids reading certain topics. But we've been very transparent throughout the process for people to be able to make an informed choice. And I believe we'll be planning on coming to the board, you know, with some more recommendations that would be more specific, I think, after we have our discussion and go over the surveys and what the, you know, what the families and and staff had had said regarding a lot of those things. So I'm, any questions or comments that anybody has?
Sure, I mean, I'll just set the stage and then obviously open up for more for more comments. I think we just need to pause to honor the work of the Curriculum Committee. When I rewind in my mind where we started, when we talked as a board about, let's get together and get a perfect rule for the curriculum, it was by the time we got to that perfect rule, the kindergartners would be seniors. So instead, we said, look, let's see if we can set up a general parameter and an iterative process, knowing, you know what, out of the gate, maybe, and I'm making up these numbers, maybe we'll be 75% of the way there on the first pass, but it will require more enhancements. And it sounds like, I mean, from what I'm hearing, I think that's accomplished. And so the idea now is we continue to improve the process. So I think this is part of the natural part of the process. And so I'm glad we're talking about this because we expected that this would happen. And, and again, I think we should, we should honor it because I think that means the process is working. So, but obviously more work to come and the work is, the work isn't done. But thank you for your work and for, you know, advancing this, you know, to the next iteration, so to speak. What other questions, comments do we have? I know, John, you, I think, had asked for this, for this topic, so I would like to honor that. Any thoughts?
I do, I have some thoughts. So I'll just go over a couple of standards that the district sets as a whole across the district. So student dress codes, student dress code, clothing, backpack, book bags and other. So, student dress codes, student dress code, clothing, backpack, book bags and other items that carry profane or objectable slogans are not considered appropriate. Students who ride the bus must obey the following rules at all times, and one of those rules being the following are not allowed on the bus, animal swearing or profane, profane language. Policy 440, refrain from use of profane and vulgar language. 443.71, anti-bullying, anti-harassment. We, we preach these things, but do not promote them within the books that we, we allow our students to read. In doing so, we're, we're desensitizing the students to profane, profane language and racial slurs, as well as violence. 443.71 also defines harassment as any act done with the intent to intimidate, threaten, harm, degrade, or physically, verbally abuse other persons. I would say we're promoting that in the books, a lot of the books that we're reading, or we're giving our kids to read. And it was completely disturbing when I got the seventh grade book reading list, and I'll quote some, some words, fuck, ass, shit, the N-word, racial slurs, hell, damn, bitch, crap. All these words in a seventh grade reading list. That's disturbing. When we have, when we have these things, and, and I'm completely not accept, it's not acceptable to, to abbreviate the words as F-word. The N-word is, I would say, okay to be abbreviated, because that's a disgusting word. But we're abbreviating them and playing them down where the parents can't actually see that they're glancing around. If they see the F-word in there as an actual whole word, that's going to be a red flag for a lot of parents to not read that book. My kids essentially have one book on each of these lists to read, and it's disgusting. And it's, and it's, it's ridiculous that most of these are fiction. One book in the, in the seventh grade reading list was nonfiction. If it was nonfiction, and, and let's say historic war, you know, a nonfiction book, that's a different story, because you're going to quote words in there, you're going to quote, you know, sayings from some soldiers and stuff like that, and that's a different story, because that is history. There are history, historic pieces in here that might be appropriate and different story, but nonfiction, there are better books. And I really appreciate what Dr. Quinn has been doing with, with removing some of the disgusting stuff that we have in this district, but this is not enough. I mean, it goes on and on with the ninth grade reading list. Same words exceeds, you know, this and that. I mean, it's, we can do better than this. It's ridiculous.
I think one of the things missing from that is the teacher's explanation behind why these books. I think that this is a, a bad snippet of some of these particular books, and I think the description behind why they find value, I think that's, takes merit in my, I mean, they are the ones that know these books. If we just look at something very small within an 80,000 page, or an 80,000-word book, it's a very small piece. I, I think that there's better reasons behind them. And I, I like the, the option that we have, not in that one that you're looking at, John, but there is one that we've had, we have as the Curriculum Committee, saying why they are of value.
Yeah, I would like to see that value, because Policy 522.4, Code of Conduct for the Teachers, also, develop positive relationships such in a way that fosters the development of positive self-image for students. How do you, how do you fostering that?
I actually, I do have something for that. So I did sit down with the whole English department, and they did, they did say, we would never recommend a book that is too mature for a certain student. They know all their students, they're recommending books, they would not put one on here if they didn't think someone's, it's appropriate for someone.
And who, and who's, and who's the, who's the next person in line to make sure that those things are getting checked? Because another piece is exercise, do care to protect the mental, physical safety of the students and fellow employees. I, I mean, this is state statutes and our own policies that we're failing on with these. I, I, I can't see any way that, that they're not failing on this by offering these books to students. How are you fostering a, a, a positive self-image when we have kids that are, are having mental problems and they're getting in fights and there's a racial battle across the freaking country, and then we're, we're okay just handing them garbage that promotes the garbage? That's not, that's not fostering the development of a positive mental image for any student or any employee. Sorry. You're not going to win on that on me?
No, that's okay. We're absolutely allowed to have our own opinions on this.
No. And it is good to have the discussion, because there certainly are differing opinions on this, and that's exactly what, why we're here as a board. So next steps, Melanie, it sounds like there's more discussion on this Curriculum Committee coming up. I think, you know, part of it, and maybe you can comment a bit on, how is the process working with regard to parental input, parental permissions? You know, I view that as a bit, safeguard is a wrong word, but I think that's an important part to this. Can you maybe comment on how that's going and maybe if that needs
Sure.
review as well?
Sure. I probably am not going to remember exact numbers, but I know that there, I mean, there was a small percentage of people who did choose to not have their kids read certain books. It wasn't large, but it was, you know, it was still meeting the needs of those families. And even with the surveys that we got back, we, we did see them briefly, but haven't gone over them in Curriculum Committee yet. But I would say the response on the survey wasn't as big as I would have liked to have seen, you know. You got just pretty much the two ends of the spectrum were the ones, the main people that had responded. It was the people that were, you know, didn't want to see any of the, the swearing or the violence in the books, and then the people that said, you know, I want my kid to read any book they want to read and don't cut any of them out, you know. So it was, I feel like basically that was what the gist of the surveys were. It was just the, the two extreme ends, and there was a lot of people that didn't really comment.
I, I, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. When we had talked about the process early on, when we did that workshop, I think one of the things that I, I think I mentioned in there was like, if, if they don't return a survey, or if they don't check, that we wanted a positive response survey, so you had to say yes, and if you didn't say yes, it was a default no. Is that correct? Am I correct in understanding that that's how it works?
Yes, yes. So anybody that doesn't turn it in can only choose from a book in the NA category.
From the NA category, right. So I think that, I still think that's important. I'm not disagreeing with, I don't know every part that John's referring to specifically, but he asked, what's the next step or who's looking at that? I, I would hope it's the parents are the, you know, the next step. They get the list. And so my assumption is, John, on your list that you're looking at, you're like, hey, this seventh grade list, I don't like these books. You collect, you either select no, or you don't put anything, which makes it an automatic no. And so, I mean, at least, I think at least that, that's a safeguard in there that I think is important, that if you don't have a parent who's giving an active yes, it's an automatic no.
I don't think that's how we have it set up right now.
I, I
I think you have to check, well, the instructions are the ones that I got, where you have to check the books that you don't want them to read.
Right, but if you didn't return it, then they will automatically default to the other
I don't think that should be an option. I think it should have to be returned, and the parent should have to, should have to say, yes, that's okay for my kid to read ass, shit, all these words in the book. I think they should have to recognize that.
I thought that's how, I thought that's how it was, but, but it is a default, but it is a default no, correct?
It is. So if a parent doesn't turn it in, they're not going to get to choose a book that has any swears in it at all. It's going to say NA, NA, NA across the board. Those will be the only choices they can make if a parent does not turn it in.
And I, and that I think is, I do think that's important. You know, I, I've, I've said before, I'm a, you know, proponent of choice for books, but at the same token, I do believe parental involvement is key. It is paramount, actually. And so, either they're actively saying yes, which is, which was my understanding, and I'm sure that's something that you guys can discuss, or it's at least a default no if it's not returned, so that we're not, no one can claim, oh, well, you know, my parents are fine with it, they, I just forgot to return it, or what, I mean, it's, then it's a no. And I, I do think that's, I think that's important. That's valuable.
Well, the feedback that we've received, I mean, it sounds, but what I also encourage is, for the curriculum committees, you've gone through, my guess is, and you talked a little bit about this, areas where, you know, maybe you benefit from additional clarity from, from the board. I'd encourage, we can make a list of those, obviously, and come back and, you know, whatever we can do to support with regard to that next step, to clarify things. But again, this is part of the iteration, and also, you know, the fact that we've got varying answers on the permission slips, I think just shows that we've got varying opinions in the public. And so, that's, that's a part of, that's a part of what makes the discussions very, very interesting and multiple opinions, and so we just need to embrace that.
Yeah. And I just want to say, you know, are the book lists perfect? Probably not. Are there better books out there? Maybe there are, but I don't know what they are. So, I mean, maybe if, if people have some good books out there, they could, you know, throw some ideas out there that maybe fit the NA category better across the board. But I think it's just been really challenging with the literature. Even if you go back to stuff that we read when we were kids, you know, that isn't modern, like there's still, you're going to find swear words and you're going to, you know, find some comment or content that would be inappropriate, and it's just, it's been a challenge. So we're doing our best to at least be really transparent about everything that's in there, so parents are aware and can make the best decision for their family, but
Yeah, and the involvement of the parental consent.
I mean, it's definitely not perfect, and it probably never will be perfect, you know, but
Was there initially, at the first discussion, was there something also about a certain percentage of the books had to be NA or not? Because that might, I mean, that might be something, that, that might be something to consider. John saying that the list he saw, he had one book that his kids were left with, so if it's a, I don't know how long the list is, if it's 10, I, I didn't
They vary, but
So if it's, you know, five or 10 books, maybe a percentage of them should be NA, you know, depending on what they're required to read. So at least they have two options or three options, you know, out of 10 or whatever it is, that are at a minimum, you have those as defaults. And part of that, I think, is just because I want to see choice no matter what. So even if parents don't return a slip, and that's an automatic no, except for the NA books, you want at least two or three they can pick from, rather than like, that, well, this is the book you can read, then you're, you're definitely reading this book then, you know. So I think that's important.
That has only had one. And I, other than one of the historical era, I can't, I'm blinking on which grade, it might have been the seventh grade, actually.
That's the one I think that's
That has all, it's all based on historical, and that, again, it's fiction, but they said based on the era, that that's where they were having a hard time with, with those.
Well, good discussion and good feedback, and likely not the last discussion we will have, and I mean that positively. That's how an iterative process works. So thanks again for moving this, moving this forward. Like I said, we were able to move forward and we'll continue to make it better and we'll incorporate additional feedback. So thank you for that.
I'm excited for the results. The data.
All right. I'm not sure if the micro, if, if the recording picked it up, but Chad, we're looking forward to the data. We were saying, you're now the data guru, and so
Yes, data, data is, is how we base a lot of our decisions, so I think it's important to have that.
All right. Thank you. So let's see, discussion item. Next is budget and financial planning information. I believe, I see Mr. Andy Sarnol taking to the podium. Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. Two weeks ago, I was in front of you, shared some information in regards to some preliminary estimates of next year's budget. Wanted to share this and just stay in touch with you, keep you informed of what's going on. Think there's a certain level of trust, I think there's a certain level of diligence as we go through a process, and make sure not only next year's budget planning is appropriate, but even also understanding how this year's information is, is progressing through the fiscal year, how we're wrapping up. So I wanted to share just that little bit of information. I have a few slides for you, and even in conjunction with the information that's being shared earlier tonight at the, the staffing, financial, excuse me, facilities, the, the community engagement sessions that are coming up over the next couple of weeks, this even pertains to that, because a little bit of discussion about what's in the revenue limit, what's outside of the revenue limit, why do we always have an inherent deficit? I've shared some of this information in the past, and it's good to have repeated information, if not just for us, as well as for other members of the community. So I appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you this evening. The, the document that's here, and you'll see a couple of these screenshots, and I actually printed out, and I was going to offer other members of the audience a copy of it, but I've printed out a few of those every time, and I think I linked this in my presentation two weeks ago. Grab one of these. It's the current year information. It's everything that you guys have seen, approved, it's all here for the current year. We have projections for next year, as well as for the next four years after that. The further out you get, a little bit less accurate because of biennial budget processes and, and things like that, enrollment counts. But what this information shares, it calculates the initial revenue limit. Really important to look at our funding. It talks about the exemptions, when we talk about the, the vouchers and some special ed areas where we get some additional funding. It talks about those different exemptions. It shares the state calculation of the general state aid. That, that's in here, it's disclosed. We're provided that information. I call it the one-legged stool. It's all based on how property-rich are we per student, and they calculate it on a three-tiered method based on that, on a, some certain amount of money that they have. The difference then is, ends up being the levy or the dollar amount upon which we ask taxpayers on average across the board to make up, and it calculates a mill rate or a taxation rate that's utilized. So again, all the information that we've had in the past, I wanted to share that. Grab one. Members of the community, please feel free to reach out. I will continue to share this, because this is not changing any differently than, than it has for the past several years. This is the comparison of the revenue limit changes in blue, the Consumer Price Index in the red line, the variance that's been, we've experienced since pre-Act 10 that led into that. So we have a widening gap of a little over $2,000, multiplied by our three-year membership of 9,000, or excuse me, 5,973 students. So technically, with the promise that was made 30 years ago and revenue limits were put in place of keeping up with the CPI, we're underfunded at this point in time, this current year, by a little over $12 million. So we take a look, another screenshot with this, because I want to talk about that revenue limit authority. It's made up from that state aid, and it's really, it's the revenue limit minus the state aid, because we're provided that dollar amount from the state. What's left? So when you take a look at the revenue limit, about $39.3 million for the current year, but when we actually look at all of the different areas of the levy, again, $39.3 million versus the total levy, there are areas outside of that revenue limit. So what authority does the school board have to enter into the full levy? And so I, I got just a little bit creative, and I hope it's visually appealing. Let's take a look at that. So the, a couple of different circles with our operational or our, our general fund operations, 37 and a half million, top red. We have our non-referendum debt, which we don't have any at this point in time, we're making the final payment for that, which we already had reserves, but that would be within our operational levy. We can borrow debt and pay it within our revenue limits, but that's another area that would be within the area. Our capital projects trust fund, so this is the $1.8 million, and it's increasing by 4% annually, that's within the revenue limit, that's our annual maintenance that you approved the preliminary project scope last month. Sometimes with board authority, which is the community services fund, these are things outside of a typical school day, as well as the community authorization, which we don't levy currently. We levied the last dollars for existing referendum debt in the 2022, 23 year, last year, but that's with community authority. So that's outside of the revenue limits. We don't have authority to levy any more dollars for future debt, because none exist at this time. So let's just take a little bit, because a couple of areas, when we take a look at the big pieces of the pie, we have federal dollars, as you can see, those are the Esser dollars, about 6 million. Miscellaneous sources, which are some of the returns of funds from prior years, but the two big sources that we look at are the state, which is the purple, 37, almost 38 million, as well as the local, and these are some student fees, some other, other dollars from the local, but it's primarily taxes that are collected. We're about 50% funded, on average across the state, it's 66% funded. We're less, because we're more property-rich than the average school district in Wisconsin. So because of those limit, revenue limit constraints, so it causes some things that we have to address. It requires a pretty extensive prioritization of costs. So as we're looking at this year's expenses, rolling that forward, how are we spending money with the deficit that we know, and we've been having a continued deficit for years now? We've consistently delivered a balanced budget. This is larger than we've seen in past years, but we prioritize the costs. I think we all remember some times in the not-too-distant future, when we've made some decisions that were adverse towards the fiscal responsibility of our district. Perfect example is the maintenance budgets. When Mr. Ross arrived in the district 15 years ago, we had a very small maintenance budget. We grew it, we created our Fund 41, which is one of our trusts that we have, where one of our trusts that we have, where we put the $1.8 million, again, growing at 4%. And as well, when we have a year that there's some surplus available, we can put some money into a second trust that's for facilities. And we've grown and used both of those. But again, both of those are within the revenue limits, and we need to make sure that we're monitoring that. But yet, at the same time, we need to be responsible with our facilities and that we're taking care of them. Statutorily speaking, and this is whether it's with, even with the, the presentation that Ms. Melstrand and the, the high school in Badger just presented, special education needs, student learning needs, making sure that we're doing our due diligence with our instructional practices. It's difficult when we have the revenue limit constraints to make sure that we're meeting our needs. We have a growing specialized population and a growing expenditure within that population, some more severe needs. We can see that in the budget, within our special education budget. We need to be aware of that and understand how that's impacting us. The last piece, and we've had discussions about this in the past, and again, within the revenue limit, outside of the revenue limit, large capital expenditures, how do we fund those? We've been setting the dollars aside within the revenue limit. But when we start taking a look at multimillion-dollar projects, remodeling, mechanicals, new buildings, that's, that's nearly, if not completely impossible for our district. We're a low-spending district. We've been picked up by the low-spending threshold. So that's impossible. And I actually ran just a couple of numbers, because I think, I think it's important to be able to, to share this just a little bit. On a $35 million project, and this, I actually kind of picked this, because as we look back to the 2019 referendum, the Jackson project that was a part of that was about $24 million. And I think now it's priced approximately, give me, give me just a little bit of room, at about $35 million. If we were, if we found a way, because we're already setting aside $1.8 million for our maintenance and upkeep, if we found a way to set aside another $1.75 million per year, just about that 1.8 that we're talking about, we'd have to double that to start setting money aside for a future construction. The inflationary measure annually at 5%, which is today's environment, equals $1.75 million. So even if we were setting those dollars aside, we would never get ahead on the project. Okay? And additionally, when we take a look at if the district at some point in time had a referendum, and we were looking at building a, some type of construction, on that same $35 million, at 4% interest, which again, is today's environment, on a 20-year debt repayment, that would equal $2.6 million of repayments. But again, we don't have that authority to be able to do that without a referendum, which is what we're doing right now, is understanding our facilities, trying to determine priorities, and listen to our community, and make sure that we're addressing that. So when we do have that opportunity, it's done correctly. Okay? But again, nearly impossible within the revenue limits to be able to do those large projects. I'm, I'm trying to keep just a little bit of a theme. I didn't get quite as fancy. But inside that revenue limit, again, those operational dollars, not meant for you to read, but it's there. Essentially, everything that we spend within our operational budget is captured here. Salaries, benefits, our other post-employment benefits, our utilities, our required transportation, we have to offer that, all the other services, all the purchase services, student technology, technology behind the scenes, things like that, that we need to make sure it's running, our insurance. All of these expenses are within the revenue limit. Outside of the revenue limit, when the community decides, when we present something to them, the community can decide with an approved referendum to be able to incur debt to complete larger projects. So that's that green area. Additionally, and very small, it's a few hundred thousand dollars, is that Fund 80, which is our community services funds, things outside of a typical school day. But that's, again, is something that's acted upon by you as a board, which is why it's yellow. So just, again, just a little bit of a different way to look at this, what's inside the revenue limit, outside of the revenue limit. So we take a look at those expenditures, and I, I put the percentages here on purpose. Salaries and benefits represent about 60%. And this is just the general fund. It's not our special education and other funds that make up the full $100 million of our budget. But salaries and benefits, about 60%. Purchase services, we outsource our transportation. This is including utilities, another $19 million. So just the different areas and the different classifications that were required to post, both the budgetarily, and you see these on a monthly basis, and then quarterly, when I present the additional information with the revenue expenditures and the aggregate. But just wanted to be able to share that information. Where do we have our dollars? And taking a look then at being able to address budgetary shortfalls and prioritizing the use of these dollars to make sure we deliver a balanced budget. Some things are already well underway. So we projected a preliminary deficit. We've been working through that, making sure that we understand that since December. We've already actively developed expense reductions. We're working through those and making sure that we're taking a look at that. We're updating more aggressively the 2023, 24 budget. So the current year, one of the big drivers, we just changed over our health plans, I shared that two weeks ago, understanding what change that will have. And we need just a little bit of time to understand that, project out what those costs are going to be through the end of the fiscal year for our staff. As always, and we had some good success, every dollar counts, grants, other revenue sources, what's out there? I know we had discussion about that two weeks ago. But we're in year two of the biennial budget. Is there going to be anything that impacts that differently than what we're already projecting? We need to take a look at what programs and services we're offering, what costs those entail. The other area that we need to talk about is, is there a way to, and this is a question, not a statement, is there a way to defer some expenditures, specifically maintenance, where we had been coding some things to our general fund, we'd moved it over to our two trusts. Part of that $5.7 million is where I've moved that back. But do we have the way to, a way to be able to balance the budget and, and be able to utilize those dollars? Some of the equity accounts that have, that have been set aside in prior years to help us bridge into the next biennial budget. OPEB, again, that, the costs related to that. Two goals that we have, minimizing student impact, as well as delivering a balanced budget. So things are underway. We have processes in place where this is a, we, we meet twice a week as a cabinet in understanding our expenditures and making sure that we're looking at all of this. Because any, anything that we're not able to address could potentially be staffing. And again, those programs and services and what we have to offer, we need to make sure that we nail this. Our students deserve it. So I just wanted to share a little bit of information tonight.
Excellent. I mean, first of all, I think the presentation on how are Wisconsin public school districts funded is useful, because it's hard to explain to someone in 30 words or less how that works. So it's a great, it's a great resource, and thank you for making sure that it's exposed to our public. Let me open this up. Any questions or thoughts, comments?
Yep.
Chad?
Question. What, what happens if we can't, in plain terms, what if we can't meet budget? What happens?
So this is, this is a little bit of a different year, but I'll, I'll pretend that we don't have the Esser funds right now. But if I delivered a balanced budget in a typical year, and we ended up overspending, meaning expenses exceeded revenues, that's when you spend fund balance, is when the clock strikes midnight from June 30th to July 1st. It's a part of our audit. It's a measurement on a specific day, is if you ended up being in the red, that's when you spend fund balance. Now likewise, did you want to comment on that, Superintendent Wimmer?
Nope, you can, you can continue speaking, but I think you're looking at, we, we wouldn't position ourselves that way. And you're asking, what happens if I'm up against a wall on the budget?
What if you just?
You make program reductions.
Okay, so that, so that's what I'm saying. Like, so I'm saying, what, what happens if it just isn't enough money in the piggy bank to pay the bills, period? There's just not, not what?
You would start looking at all of your different offerings, opportunities, looking for efficiencies. We cull out different sections that don't run, and we, we look for those automatically. But, and now, when I say this, do not, do not, like, oh, this is happening. I'm just saying, if you were up against a wall, I've been in other systems, where you start looking at, I, I'm not positioned where I can offer band, orchestra, and every music selection, starting in fifth grade. I might have three foreign language strands that start as early as fifth grade. You would start looking at things that protect your overall program and opportunities for kids, but maybe you're looking at, maybe I don't need to start that sooner. Maybe I have some other things there. You have to start making really hard decisions on those pieces.
But the bottom line is, all of, all of that affects students, right? I mean, all of, that's my point, is if you can't make it, where you start cutting, you just have to start cutting services. Even if you're looking at salaries and saying, well, that's 60% of that general fund balance, you know, okay, so if you cut a bunch of teachers, now who's, who's, the students didn't go away, who's teaching them? You know, so I mean, I, I think it's, this is such an interesting and frustrating process in the sense that there's, you know, it's like the bills keep going up, but the income stays, but the salary stays the same. You know, like, that, that becomes an insurmountable challenge at some point. And it certainly, you know, eliminates the ability to do large projects, obviously. And so I guess my, you know, part of my, I, I mean, I knew the answer, but I, I wanted to just kind of throw it out there for the general public to say, you know, bottom line, what happens when, you know, if, if, because we can't be the only district who looks at a budget and says, oh, boy, it's going to be a tough year. I mean, we're in, we're in a good financial position in the sense of debt, as, you know, Kurt's certainly pointed out multiple times as well. And so, you know, there has to be other school districts out there who are sitting there going, we can't, we can't turn the lights on next month or something. I don't know. But, you know, so I guess I just wanted to kind of have some of that clarity out there for the general public.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yeah. I apologize for my initial response, because there, there's a misconception about fund balance. So, you know, so you, again, you only spend fund balance on that day, versus today, if a boiler broke and we had to spend $100,000, just use fund balance. That's why it's there, and it kind of is. But use fund balance. Well, that just means it's an unbudgeted boiler. We still encourage an expense, and even though that expense is in our activity, it's not until June 30th, when the, the clock strikes, that you determine that positive, negative. So related to the budget, making sure that that balanced budget is accurate, that, that it's not misleading, that both revenues and expenditures are stated appropriately. So it leads to activity that ends up being where we expect it to be at year end. That's another important part. So I hope that, I hope that makes sense, just to share that a little.
It does. And I think just, you know, I mean, after last meeting, you know, I had some comments about, you know, well, districts, $5 million in debt, how does that happen? Where's, you know, frivolous spending, or, you know, not paying it to the right things, or bad budgeting, or whatever. But I think, you know, when you look at the, that percentile you had back on, you know, whatever slide that was, slide seven, maybe it was a, no, sorry, slide 10. When you look at those percentages from the general fund balance, I mean, that's a, it's a, it's, it's not an atypical distribution of funds for a business. You know, I look at my business budget, and these percentages aren't that far off for how you, you spend money, you know. And so I think a lot of people are like, well, this program could be cut, or like, you know, we're paying too much for this, or this. But these are, I mean, we're talking about $100 million budget. Those are relatively small numbers of, like, cut that program, we don't need that. Okay, well, you just saved yourself $30,000. You know, I mean, these aren't huge numbers. So you're talking about cutting multiple small services, or some major service, you know, to even come close to saying, you know, this is really going to fix our, our $5 million deficit. I mean, these, that's a, those are big numbers. You know, so I think it's just important for people to understand, like, there's, there might be some programs or some overspending, or maybe you think we have too many people in this position, or this position. But in general, those are not the things, those are not the items that you just, you know, you take those one or two items away, and the budget is like, oh, now we're good. You know, I mean, these are, these are major numbers. So I just, I think it's just important for people to understand, like, there's not a, I don't see, when I look at the budget items, see a bunch of frivolous or misguided money. And even if there is something I disagree with in one line item or another, it's not enough that's going to shift the budget balance. So that's, I just wanted to say that.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Other thoughts or comments, questions?
I, I would just say, I, I don't disagree with that, but I think the, you know, I think the district, I think we're moving in the right direction with the stuff we're doing and down, or, and right sizing. But, you know, in order, in order to not incur more debt, or more, you know, widen that gap any further, stuff needs to go away. We need to shrink stuff, shrink the sizes of what we have own, you know, maintain, because less maintenance, obviously, we're saving money that way, too. So, you know, the, the budget doesn't have to maybe move certain ways. You know, if we don't have so much maintenance, obviously, we save, we can save millions of dollars right there if we have less building, and we consolidate things, and we get the right sizing. So, I mean, that just makes it that much more important to get this finished up and get this work done.
Agreed. Chad?
I agree with you, John, as far as right sizing. And even that, I was, you know, when we're talking, looking through the Findorf budgeting and, and the different projects and stuff, and I had asked this two meetings ago, when I kind of looked over to you, and I was like, what are we currently budgeting? And you were like, you know, 2 million. And I'm like, oh, but we need 15 over the next 15 years, you know, each year. So, you know, I mean, it's, even with right sizing, I agree that has to happen. But even if we right-size, let's say we, we close one maintenance full building, and we, hey, this maintenance is off our books, all those students move over to another building, you have to, you have to make that building right now for all of those students, the extra traffic, and wear and tear and everything else. And the maintenance gets shifted, probably saved, but still shifted in some extent. And that's why, when I'm looking at our, our future needs for a district, if we want to continue to have, you know, a successful, you know, program for all of our students, it's going to be so important to get the community engaged on what needs to happen. Because I can't see, I, I mean, I've been, every Tuesday, I've been out at one of the different schools, you know, there to, to talk to teachers and, and look at the facilities. And, you know, there's no question that some of these facilities just need a lot, if not replace. I mean, Jackson, I think everyone is, is in agreement that Jackson is not sustainable the way it is. If, if nothing else, just for a safety hazard, even if you just don't like how something, you know, I don't want to save the money. You know, I mean, that's, these are projects that are going to need community involvement. There is no scenario where we come up with the money to do something in Jackson that doesn't involve our community agreeing to do something with Jackson, or any of our other facilities, you know, no matter what the plan is. And I just think it's important that people get engaged in these discussions, and also important that we continue to look at things like our mill rate. And, and, you know, three meetings ago, when we're showing mill rates of 5.81, or whatever it was, you know, and we're like the cheapest in the state, or the second cheapest in the whole state, as far as like, mill rates go. And to say, you know, even if, even if, worst-case scenario, you know, Findorf had proposed, not proposed, but they had shown in the worst, you know, even if you borrowed $180 million, which sounds crazy amount of money to borrow, it raised our mill rate to still keep us as the second cheapest mill rate in, in the state. You know, I think it's so important that people understand, like, we have a cheap district in general. You know, our entire annual operating budget costs less than half a Marvel movie to make. You know, I mean, this is, this is a huge number on an individual budget. You know, I mean, none of us are up here individually funding this district. We don't have $100 million, but, you know, or 30 million to build a school. But in the realm of like, what you get out of that school, I just think it's important that the community understands, like, these are important investments. And in general, it still keeps us as one of the cheapest districts in the state. That is important for people to understand. And I know I've heard Kurt say that multiple times before. So he's rubbed off on me.
Kurt?
I was at poker night last Friday night in Greendale.
Trying to win some money for the.
My neighbor has a similar-sized house as me, 350. He pays 1,200 more dollars in school taxes in Greendale than we do in West Bend. 1,200 more, $3 higher on the mill rate. He's, he's got an $8.16 mill rate.
That's a 40% increase.
Yeah, so similar-sized house. I mean, same value, anyway.
Well, the good news is, we have opportunities for public discussion on a number of these things. So we want to, as I think we've heard from around the table, we really want people to turn out and to hear and to learn. So we encourage that definitely. Other questions, comments?
Just for the record, I don't love paying taxes, by the way. That's, I just want to say, I'm not looking forward to increasing my taxes. But I just wanted to say that this is a reality, and, and also the reality of, hey, we can still be a relatively, or very fiscally conservative district, and still provide great opportunities and facilities for our students and our community. And that is important.
Well said. Thank you. We appreciate the, appreciate the discussion.
Appreciate it.
All right. Next, we have policies for first reading. Superintendent Wimmer, I believe you're going to walk us through that. And I probably caught you mid, mid, mid-water there.
Good. We foreshadowed in the report, President Zweiger did, around the work of the committee, and certainly a large handful you saw before, and had the opportunity to discuss to frame what the committee was doing. So in the first one, it's simply renumbering. 188 would be the wrong number on the books for this. We're just seeking renumbering of policy 119. It's the high school configuration review process, not changing any content, but we need to have that updated. 188 is really board member electronic participation in meetings, per the numbering. So we sought a, a number change from WASBE there. Policy 165.2 nepotism, as well as 533.2, we've certainly done probably the most work around these two policies, you know, spanning a, a year. But in that last conversation, it was really making sure that the language that was constructed, that we were confident in bringing forward, created an avenue for us to continue to hire the best applicant, regardless of some kind of relationship they might have, and also that it would not obstruct someone's ability to move up in the organization. So we've done that final check. We bring forward that language for you confidently. We bring forward that language for you confidently. And then the other that we had significant conversation was taking the policy 872, which was citizen complaints, and really constructing two policies on that, an 870 around general public complaints, but then tailoring one towards board complaints specifically, nesting it in the 100 series, which is where policy is related to the board belongs. We had some really great language in our former policy that had timelines, expectations, kind of that pathway, how to do that, what you can expect and around that. So we've crafted language that, that meets those pieces. In addition, then we would be ready for removal of 872, our former language, with that replacement of 167 and 870. And then there was a piece on the books, 887 around relations with tax incremental finance. Those are TID or TIF, those are districts. Any entity that receives taxpayer funds would go to the table on a decision for a community that makes those. So generally, myself or Andy Sarno represents the district in that, but we wanted to, outside of policy, put some checks and balances in our obligation to keep the board informed and have dialogue. So we go to annual meetings that give us an update around TIF performance in the communities we serve and receive taxes from, and then if they were to create a new one, maybe there's a large development. It creates that obligation for us to engage the board in dialogue so that when we go to the table to represent the board, that we're doing that mindfully with their wishes. So we've moved that into specifically the job description and expected roles and responsibilities. So we're comfortable with bringing that policy forward for removal for your consideration. So the committee would be eager to hear your feedback at this first reading.
Again, as a reminder, it is a first reading, so we won't be taking action on this, but we certainly, as Superintendent Wimmer said, would welcome feedback. Any thoughts, questions? And if you don't have any tonight, we certainly have time between now and our next meeting to share those, I'd say, either through me or through Superintendent Wimmer. Any questions in the meantime? Kurt?
Yeah. Just a quick comment. I think I'm in the minority on the nepotism policy, but being at a, being at public companies and private companies, my whole kind of professional life, I have not seen a strict policy as we're writing for an employee, writing nepotism that they can't, a spouse, a former spouse, significant other, domestic partner, biological or adopted child, stepchild, parent, step parent, parent-in-law, sibling, step sibling, sibling-in-law, grandparents, step-grandparent, grandparent-in-law, aunt, uncle, cousin, niece, nephew, financial dependent, co-inhabitant, or individual with guardianship relationship. You can't manage a person and I'm pretty consistent on, I haven't had a complaint in six years being on the board. I've seen a lot of families that have a sibling working in the district and they're under more scrutiny than ever. We're a public school district. I don't think we need a strict policy like this. That is stricter than what I've ever seen in my business career, so I'm just giving you the reason why I'm going to be not voting for that and hopefully might pull a couple of board members along the way with my argument.
Great, Kurt, appreciate that.
A lot of that verbiage is, is mimicked from the state statute also. So we did, we did take that when we were looking at that and that, some of that verbiage, those indicators of lineage are taken straight from the state statute. So those weren't just made up, I don't believe, by us. If I remember right, we took, we took those straight from a state statute. So we're, we're not restricting it any further than what the state statute did, because I believe we did look at that and we did, you know, kind of defer to what the state is, is saying is inappropriate for nepotism in a workplace.
Kurt, I appreciate your point. I think it's, we want to be sure that we're not passing this, that this is some solution in search of a problem, so to speak, if you know what I'm saying. I appreciate that. Other thoughts?
Yeah, I totally get where you're coming from, and John's correct in the sense that this was, a lot of it was pulled right from state statutes, stand line there. I think the actual naming of every one of the relatives, I think it wasn't as specific in the state statutes. It spoke more to like a general term like lineage or direct relative or something like that. And there was some feedback, I think some community and some board feedback, that some more specific language might be, you know, better to have in there for clarity's sake. But again, I think, like you said, it hasn't come up in this, the whole time that you've been on the board, and I don't see it coming up because there's safeguards in place that would just make it so that no, the whole point, because I agree with you, the best people to be hired regardless. I think the point is just to make sure that there's no perception of unfair, you know, hiring processes or management processes. And at policy, we've talked about how there is a safeguard in place where you would, you can move to almost any position in the district and be able to have a management structure that would allow that to happen. That there's almost, almost no scenario where you would have no option but to be managed by one of those people, that you could just shift that to the person lateral and they could be your direct manager. So it really won't, because I agree with you, but I do want to say, we have looked at this in policy and this, this would essentially not restrict anybody. It sounds like it does. It really doesn't because the management structure is set up as such that you can just find a different person to be your direct report, and that eliminates that problem. So they can still have the position and do the thing. So I do get where you're coming from on it, and I, you know, it's just, I think this is, this is probably something that will never be an issue, I hope.
Good discussion. Other thoughts on this, on nepotism or any other policy? All right, so we'll see these come back for a second reading and give some individuals time for additional thought and discussion. All right, thank you for that. We move then to action items. We have one action item, a new course proposal, firefighter one hazmat. Superintendent Wimmer, I believe this was a topic that was presented at our prior meeting. Does the administration have any additional information to consider on this?
No addition or changes.
Right. Any questions regarding the new course proposal? Hearing none, I would move to approve the new course proposal for firefighter one hazmat as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Melanie, motion and second to approve this new course proposal for firefighter one hazmat. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. We move then to future agenda items, and we'll move to our board meeting calendar. So I'll list off some upcoming meetings that we have currently scheduled. All of these are currently scheduled to take place at the Education Service Center on February 20th, 2024, curriculum committee meeting, 4:30 PM. March 4, regular board meeting at 5:30 PM. March 12, policy committee meeting at 4:00 PM. And March 19, curriculum committee meeting, 4:30 PM. Just going to double check, because I know sometimes my times were off on these curriculum committee meetings. We're good? Okay, I got it, we got it right this time. Thank you. All right, any questions on the upcoming calendar? We always encourage the public, though, to check for the official postings, as the time and location may change, but that's our current calendar at this time. Are there any additional items for follow-up and communication? All right, hearing none. We've reached the end of our planned agenda, but we have an item that's appropriate to discuss in executive session. So I would move to adjourn into executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.851C to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and take any such action if necessary based on its discussion, namely, compensation and employment. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kelly. We have a motion and second to adjourn into executive session. Any final discussion? Hearing none, this requires a roll call vote, so I will take the roll. Mr. Swiger votes yes. Ms. Lang?
Yes.
Dr. Temez?
Yes.
Ms. Kruger?
Yes.
Mr. Rebholz?
Yes.
Ms. Aragot?
Yes.
And Mr. Donaldson?
Yes.
Thank you. We have unanimous vote. We adjourned into executive session. Thank you, everyone, for watching, attending, and participating. [end of transcript]